Council, it's an order. Henry, you got your microphone going? There you go.
Very good.
As we always do, we will take a moment of reflection so that you can think about issues in family and friends and things going on that you would like to, a moment of silent thought for. Thank you. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'm gonna ask Councilman Sam Bishop if he would plead us in pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have several adjustments to the agenda. The first being under section C, D, and E. The services should be, should read $500,000 or more renewable up to a five-year term. That's for C, D, and E. F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M are going to be tabled at this time for the Planning Commission, for the Street Committee to have a little bit more time to review them. And I would like to add, under the, I would like, would have been N, I'm not sure where it is on the alphabet now, but I would like to add a resolution recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Christiansburg. Do you have a motion? It's okay to do?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as described.
I'll second.
Get a motion and a second? Any discussions?
The first one, you, I lost you. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. C, C, D, and E will go to $500,000 each.
For up to five years.
Be between $100,000 and $500,000.
Well, it's up to, right?
Up to.
$500,000. And then, John, just F, down it's going.
F all the way to the end except N, which would now be the Parks Resolution. So I have a motion and a second. John, you clear now? I mean, pretty close?
I think so. Just the engineers and the other one where they're up to $500,000 is not 500.
Yeah, it's up to anywhere from $100 to $500 in an annual, on an annual basis.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is 5-0. Under the consent agenda that we will be considering tonight, you have the approval of the minutes of the June 14th, 2022, and June 17th, 2022 meetings. The monthly bill list, contract for ACOM Technical Services for annual bridge inspections and engineering of the amount of up to $500,000 renewable. Contract for SCS Engineers, Inc., Professional Engineering Services, post-closure of the landfill, engineering and monitoring in the amount up to $500,000 or more renewable for its five-year term. And a contract renewal one with Wetland Study Solution Incorporated DBA WSSI for stormwater engineering on call services, the engineering for the amount of five, up to $500,000 or more. And the other is the resolution declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Move back to this one.
Are you gonna?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Get a motion and a second to approve. Discussion?
Was the agenda moved for the public hearing as well for the drone?
No, I had to get that out of the way on the public hearing. I'm going next on the public hearing.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to, on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is 5-0. Thank you. We have a public hearing set tonight, an agreement for wing delivery designed at Christiansburg Recreation Center at 1600 North Franklin Street. Is there anyone here to address this matter?
Is this on? Should I? I don't know if it's working, but. Okay. Oh, it's up there. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, sorry about that. Hi, Nick Devero again with Wing Aviation. As you recall, a couple meetings ago, my colleague and I came and presented before the town council the proposal that we have for putting in place a public delivery zone or a delivery location for the wing drone delivery service at the Christiansburg Recreation Center. We have, since that meeting, we have conducted negotiations and discussions with town staff to come together on an agreement that will allow for that public delivery zone to be put in place at the rec center. I believe that that is included in the materials for the agenda packet today. I'm here to answer any questions, but just to reiterate, the driving idea behind this is that we have a delivery area or sort of a footprint here in Christiansburg where Wing is approved to fly by the FAA. And being able to expand beyond those limitations has proven to be a process, a lengthy process that is taking some time. And so in an effort to bring the service to more people, we are proposing that we provide for a public area on the property of the town at the rec center so that anybody could come and download the app and place an order and have a wing drone deliver that order directly to them at the rec center. So I'm available to answer any questions, but that's the thrust of it.
All right. I have a question for you or Mr. Wingfield. If you look at it, you say you changed from 900 square feet to 400 square feet and in the grassy area, I'm not, because what's, what's gonna do the parking lot? So where's the grassy area?
It's adjoining the parking lot to the rear of the building, I guess along Cambria Street.
There you go, I see. So that's the Huckleberry, so it's between the Huckleberry and the parking lot.
That's the rear entrance of the rec center that you're seeing there.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick, have you all, well, I guess you've done it anyplace else in the country. Have you done, have you done these, we're the only place you're doing right now, other than Dallas maybe? But have you had experience overseas with auxiliary delivery?
Yes, sir, we have. We've done this before in other countries where we operate. In Finland, for example, we've conducted the same sort of operation where we used a public park. And within that park, we had signage and we had a process for people to be able to go through ordering and then the deliveries would be placed and delivered. Everything there in terms of that public delivery area has worked out. And so we're excited to be able to bring that to the town of Christiansburg as well.
Sir, I'm sorry. I know this has nothing to do with this location, but can you tell me again where is the location at again, the one that you're doing it at?
The other operation that I referenced was in Helsinki, Finland.
What, what is it?
Helsinki, Finland. It's, it's close to Europe. It's in Scandinavia.
What was the name of the town again?
Helsinki.
Helsinki. I just would like to look at it and see how, how it looks, just for curiosity. But no, I'm excited about this. Thank you.
I'm happy to provide more information on that as well, if you'd like. Thank you.
Is there anything that they did that we're now doing or something that we're doing that they're not doing that will make your delivery process bettered and maybe this whole thing a lot better for everybody in Christiansburg?
Well, I think what we will try to do here is have this so that it's on a bit more of a permanent basis. We, of course, will start slowly. We're not gonna have it every, every day of the week in which we operate. But we would like to be able to do it on a recurring weekly basis. And following initial results and making sure that everything is working out and seeing what the demand is, we'd like to be able to tweak that schedule. But we do envision this being a bit more of a permanent option for people in Christiansburg than it was or has been in our other location.
Your delivery area in town, is it, is it like a three-mile radius? I'm not exactly the...
It's not an exact square, but, but it's, it's at the maximum probably about four, four miles, I think.
So someone living out into the county that wanted to take that service could come to the rec center and make their order and pick it up there?
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
If this is approved in a couple weeks, when do you plan on starting up?
Well, the, the idea would be that if we're able to get approval, then we would start it as soon as, a few days after that, that approval is granted.
Thank you.
Sure.
I may be wrong, but I don't know if it was that you were going to be providing services or not providing services during like farmers market or normal events. Is that something that, I know, I think there was something mentioned, but I didn't get clarification, I think.
So, so we would be, I think we would be open to being able to change the schedule based on what sort of inputs we're getting and feedback that we're getting. Our initial proposal at the outset is to operate one day a week. So we would, we would operate on Saturdays. And then after the first few weeks are under our belt, we could then revisit and see if there are other options or other schedules that might allow for either an expansion of the operating hours or something else that would fit the community best.
Now, if you get enough demand at this location on Saturdays, you said that you may be open to open it up more days on the week. Will that cause go on to the businesses providing the business? Or will it go on to you guys only? Or will we, will the town have to do anything to work there?
To be honest, the town would not have to do anything. We would, of course, coordinate very closely with the Department of Parks and Recreation. We would, but we would, in essence, treat it as we would any other delivery address. So, so the partners with whom we operate, the businesses who stock their goods, the inventory for us to deliver, that would all go as, as planned, as it always has. And, and it really, for us, would just be another delivery. There might be a lot more of them, we'll see. In which case, we would, we would appeal to our merchant partners to provide us more that we could deliver.
That's awesome. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any other questions for Nick while we have him up?
No, sir.
Casey? Thanks, Nick.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else here to address this issue?
Paul Lackner, 160, Alexa Lane in Christiansburg. I'm not sure if this is pertinent to the issue, but just for future reference, when I sit on my patio and I hear the drone come over, it's sort of neat, you know, because it's, it's new technology. I actually used it a couple years ago. I think I was the first one in our neighborhood. But it occurs to me that if this is all day long, every day, it's a high-pitched whirring noise. It's not real, real loud. It's not like a Harley-Davidson. But it is noticeable and I could see that becoming somewhat annoying. And hopefully, my wife thinks that technology will probably make that better. It's just, I wouldn't want to be sitting outside and hearing that all the time when I'm trying to read or do something. That's my only comment.
Based on the location, Paul, it's gonna be, it's not close enough to a residential area for them to hear, because it's gonna be right at the rec center. And the traffic going up and down South Franklin Street, north and south Franklin Street, would probably drown out some of it. So I don't think, it's not a, it's not a day-long, everyday thing.
But will it still be delivering to neighborhoods?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's where I'm, I'm in, that's what I'm talking about, in a neighborhood. And so maybe this isn't directly concerning this issue, the location at the, at the rec center. It's just a general comment.
Okay.
Something to think of in the future.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Well, it is, I know it's a system comment. It is understandable. I know I see them. I don't know if it's wing, but somebody runs one back and forth over the mall day long. So that is a good point you brought up. Are these devices, I mean, is technology continue, continually progressing to a more silent flight, so to speak?
Yeah, I will say to that point, it's immensely important that we hear from people such as yourself so that we can gauge the community sentiment and respond to it as best we can. Our team of engineers is working, you know, each and every day on improving the technology. A lot of what goes into their work is ensuring that we have the latest technology to improve the performance of the aircraft. And that includes being able to change the, with the sound footprint of it. And so, you know, there are improvements to be made, I think, in that regard. We've, we've been able to incorporate some of those into a newer aircraft that we're currently flying in Australia, which we hope to be able to bring here to the US as soon as we're able to, able to get the FAA to approve it.
So that, that is something that's on the table for the, when this type of delivery device progresses forward. I mean, you've heard about this prior to it being mentioned here, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Dodd, I'm sorry. Can I ask you something really quick? Where was it that you say you live currently right now?
We live just off of Christianville Road. It's a small development. And I don't know why we were chosen. You know, I thought it was pretty cool. So we ordered something from, I think it was Walmart. So yesterday or the day before, our neighbor got a delivery and for some reason they came over twice. It's, I could see that becoming somewhat annoying, that noise. It's not, you know, like I said, it's not real, real loud, but it's loud enough. You can hear it from inside the house and you can certainly hear it from your outside. I don't know if you've heard of it?
I have. I, you know, when, my kids look forward to me doing business on that side of town so I can take them along and they can order things from Wing. So for children, it's definitely an excitement. And mostly when you don't have it, you want it. And then when you have it, it's like, oh, it's there to stay.
It's a novelty now, but, you know, it might be the wave of the future and it's just something. It's something else.
And this other question would be for the Wing representative. As far as the recreational facility goes, you are not far away from your, from the place where you deliver things out of. How does this plane go from your place to this place, the rec center? It probably doesn't necessarily go by the residential areas, correct? Because I know it goes up and then the only really, you can hear the noises when it's coming down. Or that's to me, my perspective. But you cannot really hear it much when it's up in the air, up high. How does the recreational side look as far as noises go in residential areas?
To, to my knowledge, well, there are a couple points here. You know, our, our system does use something that we call randomized route planning. So it doesn't travel the same, the exact same corridor each and every time that it might make a delivery to a certain address. And one of the benefits of that is that this exact issue, it's sort of dispersed so people don't live under a very highly trafficked drone corridor. The, the other piece, in answer to your question though, is, my understanding is that the route that would be taken to get to the rec center is primarily gonna be over commercial, a commercial area. Very few residences within that route. And.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Also to your point, it does go around 65 miles an hour or so. So if you are below the, if it's, if it's zipping along above you, it's a, it's a small window of time during which you may see or hear it. It's somewhat fleeting. But, but to your point, and to yours as well, sir, when it's making the delivery, you can, that's a longer duration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then I will close the public hearing. We have no introductions and presentations tonight. We have citizens' comments, and in this section, if you'd like to address the council, come to the microphone, your name and address. You have three minutes and address your comments to the chair, which is me. So anyone here would like to come forward?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Frank and I would like to put in a restaurant sports bar here in the town of Christiansburg, but I'm gonna need some help. We've, there's an ordinance on your books that we're not allowed to have pool tables or alcohol in the town. That's what I'm doing here today, to see if we can figure out some way to make this happen. Basically, what I'm looking to do is something like a bowling bones, just on a larger scale. Around 20,000 square feet is what I'm looking.
Where is the location now? I'm sorry.
31. 3165 North Franklin Street, Lloyd Birch. That used to be Tuesday Morning and a consignment shop beside it. That, that both buildings are vacant. I've already spoke to him and I have the building secured. I'm just waiting to see if we can get this approved.
Have you been before the Planning Commission yet?
No, we have not.
It wouldn't necessarily have to go to Planning Commission. It's not in our zoning ordinance. It's actually a separate ordinance. And the wording in the ordinance is that, that alcohol sales aren't allowed in the same room or isn't allowed to be dispensed in the same room as billiards and pool. I've spoken to Mr. Frank and I suggested he come to council to speak to you in regards to if you would want to consider amendment of the code.
That ordinance is really old. How old is it again?
It's, it's, it was here when I started the town 24 years ago. And I think it was on the books a lot, lot longer than that.
It was signed by George Washington, I think. I'm not sure.
1972.
Yes.
Is there something that we can put, is this discussion for town council, we can actually put this? I am in favor of relooking and looking at this.
Thank you.
I think, yeah. I think so. I mean, it's, it's, we have a lot of ordinances that are on the books and they stay there and stay there and stay there and we never change them until, and they're never used. And so this is an instance that I think we would probably get with Randy and the town attorneys and come back and discuss it at council, if that's what we want to do. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, it can be the, pool tables and the alcohol can be in the same building, but you can't have the pool tables next to your alcohol area.
Correct. You can't actually serve alcohol. People are allowed to purchase alcohol, say purchase a pitcher or an individual beer and take it into the room, but they're not allowed to have beer service, is the way the ordinance is written.
In the same room as the tables.
As the same room as the tables.
Is that just pool tables or is that any type of, I want to say, I don't want to say gambling table, but any type of venue like?
It's just written as bowling billiards.
Wow, okay.
Is there any way that we can look into it, maybe setting up a square feet, like maybe so many feet away from the table?
Well, I think that's what we've discussed and we're gonna look at. I'm gonna let Andrew and Randy and planning and probably engineering and building inspections. We'll, we'll get a management team in on this and just see what can be done. We'll incorporate Mr. Broton into it, because he's gonna have to probably rewrite the ordinance if we decide to change it.
You could simply repeal it if you wanted to. I'll forward you the wording in the current rules.
Randy, how many inquiries do you get like this per year?
Typically, they're fairly seldom, to be honest.
On average, how many per year?
Probably about one a year.
Probably they read the ordinance and they back out.
Did they?
They did that right thing.
And I'm talking, just in order to amend the code in general. I'm not talking specifically about alcohol sales and pool.
Well, I just wouldn't want to remove it. I'm sure Blacksburg has something for bowling bones. You mentioned them.
They do.
I'm sure they have, there's some ordinance in the Blacksburg records we can take a look at when we compare it. Hey, Mr. Frank, what's your address?
I live 2502 Winter Green Drive, Montgomery County.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What is that, Randy? Is this ordinance very similar to the one about food and drinking?
Thank you. Anyone, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's the state regulation.
Anyone else to address council? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Glass. I live at 745 East Main Street in Christiansburg, Virginia. Believe I received a phone call from your town manager on Friday regarding your sustainability committee. I just wanted to come down here and just kind of show my face and introduce myself, potential nominee. So if you guys have any questions or have anything for me, love to, love to talk with you guys. But just wanted to come down here and just listen.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
He's just, he's interested in being the citizen appointee on the sustainability committee.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
But I will say this, any, any type of, I want to say ad hoc committees, but it's not. Michael, when they meet, it's imperative for citizens to show up. This group isn't gonna be meeting behind closed doors. So even if you're not on the committee, you can at least show up and your concerns or if you want to push an agenda, they will be heard by the committee.
Okay. I appreciate the input on that there. Like I said, my background's within civil engineering, worked a little bit with Craig Moore with VDOT. So I've kind of have a little bit of background within sustainability and transportation, but I appreciate the comments here. And even if I'm not on the committee there, that's something to consider to push forward if I have anything, I want to push forward to it.
Well, thank you very much.
It's always nice to hear people showing up to be a part of their town committees or whatever it is.
Anyone else to address council? Hearing none, I will close the citizens' comment section. Committee reports. Anybody from any of the committees, Tim?
I don't have any.
Sam?
No.
Yes, we got a meeting tomorrow, 11:00.
Central business.
Central business.
12:00. It's 12 o'clock. Did it? Is it 11? It's 11. All right.
Casey will be here.
He'll come, he'll come in the last minute out of breath as he does for meetings, so that's okay. All right, very good. Casey, you got anything else?
My mistake. No, nothing else.
Very good. Discussions by, in action by mayor and council. Incidentally for, I think our reporter from Channel 7 was here about the zone, the wing thing. We will not actually vote on it for two weeks. Okay, very good.
It's great news and positive news. Thank you for coming.
Okay, Randy, sustainability?
Yes. So we, at the retreat, one of the topics was sustainability and one of the recommendations was to come up with a sustainability committee in order to help guide on that. I was instructed to try to come up with potential names for the sustainability committee and I had those included in the packet. I guess town council representative was suggested as potentially Councilman Wilson. And staff that basically I'm recommending would be myself from administration, Mike Kelly, our engineering director, Benjamin Tripp, our planning director, Jim Lanzenese, our public works director, Travis Moles, Assistant Director of Public Works for Streets, Christina Edney for Public Relations, and as a business representative, Joseph Kuhn, who's the Uptown Christiansburg Mall manager, and Mr. Glass, who is a VDOT roadway design engineer.
Mr. Glass, you asking your own?
There you go. Do I have a motion to approve this committee?
So move.
A motion in the second. Any discussion? Welcome to the railroad, Tim. You didn't even know you're coming. Don't miss meetings, my brother. Okay. Actually, I sat with Randy a couple of weeks ago and we discussed the... Actually, I sat with Randy a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed the possibility. So we have a motion in a second. Any discussions? Madam clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five oh. Thank you very much, and appreciate your service, Michael. Appreciate you coming with us. Tell Craig hello. I haven't seen him in a while.
I'll do.
And the next part on the agenda is the boundary line adjustments or procedures for that. Randy, I think you have something along that line.
Yes. Administration's been tasked with coming up with specific criteria for corporate boundary adjustments and also developing a application for that. At your places, at your seats, you'll find a, a application form that's proposed, also a list of proposed criteria. Just, I guess, a brief presentation. Of course, at the council work session, council directed staff to come up with these guidelines. Criteria should be similar for bringing property in and out of town, an evaluation of impacts on infrastructure and services, and consistent with, being consistent with town plans. The owner must make the request to both the town and the county, and the board of supervisors would have to approve the corporate boundary line adjustments for the changes to occur. Potential criteria, and these are as recommendations, that no limit on acreage proposed to bring into property into town, that developed land would not be eligible for unincorporation if it's requested. Also, we would recommend establishing a maximum acreage for leaving town of ten acres. That's because of the potential impact to the town. Also propose that land be taken out must join corporate limits. Also, of course, land coming into town must join corporate limits. And if land is to be taken out of town, it would have to either, it can't basically create a hole. And it would have to substantially, basically still be adjoining the. New proposal will be considered if the remaining property was substantially create a, basically a hole. Kind of an odd configuration.
How come you came up with the ten acres thing?
It is a little bit subjective. It's really just between staff discussion. Like I say, I think we're open to anything, but we felt ten acres was.
The max.
Was, was, yes, as a maximum.
Anything under ten?
Yes. We felt ten acres was fairly substantial and enough that it might have an impact on the town as far as revenues, utilities, economies of scale for our services.
I guess I have a question about that. How much, we don't have a lot of, in my perspective, things. I think my opinion will be that there is not that much land in the town that is ten acres or less that is really not developed. So, I mean, you talk about how many pieces of land in the town will be even.
It would be a little bit limiting on property leaving town.
Which is part of our goal, is to minimize the impact.
That's, that's the way I took it.
Right.
I kind of would like it less to, I mean, ten acres is a lot.
Well, that's the maximum amount. If someone had three acres as the request that we've had, that falls within that up to ten acres.
I think it's opposite. She's looking at less acreage.
Yes.
It says here maximum of ten acres. She's looking at maximum of, let's say, three to five, or, or three acres. You said five, you said three acres.
If council would like to reduce that acreage.
I would really like to know how much land in the town we actually have that is undeveloped for that amount. I mean, it's.
We can come up with a map for you. Wouldn't be that hard.
I think this would play into the future as well. But I think your developed land would not be eligible to leave town. Sort of prevents anybody from building a commercial space and then a couple of years later asking to be, or wanting to be removed, so.
And it isn't, and it is an application. It isn't like just because you meet these criterias, it's automatic.
That's correct. It still, it still would require town council approval and approval of the board of supervisors.
I mean, they're probably in favor of anyone of that.
So would not have to. So it does not, at this point, you're not recommending that this go to the planning commission?
Unless zoning is being assigned for property coming into town.
And that's only if that comes until we have to zone.
That's required.
If it's leaving, that's up to the county to zone.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any reason why we didn't want to take it, make the process more like a public hearing?
It would require a public hearing.
It would through the public, through the planning commission.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the boundary adjustment would require a public hearing, and assigning zoning would require public hearings with planning commission and council.
Okay. Can we get in these criteria that has to be agreed to upon the county? Of course, they wouldn't be going, but it'd be nice to get that.
I can forward these to the county and get their input.
No, our criteria is, the county has to approve it coming into the county.
Okay. And that would be a requirement anyhow.
It would be.
Yes.
Let me ask you something, Shaw Walter. What do you think will be the reason why the county, if you were a county member, just assume, what will make you think that it would not be a good idea to allow it to leave? It's not property that you have to send police, fire department, rescue squad. You don't have to take care of the roads. You have to neither, you do nothing else.
If it goes out to the county and it borders a road, it's a county road. It's, it's a service they're going to have to provide.
Not necessarily. A lot of the towns happens to be state roads.
Right, but we stop plowing once we hit the county line.
Yeah, I know, but it's not something.
Sewer backup, that's additional service the county would have to go, or the public service authority would have to go on, so.
But I'm just saying, from your perspective, as far as like, that's not, that's not something that they will be losing. They're not losing real estate income. They're still gonna be paying.
They gain it. They just have to pick up additional services to this property. For instance, if it was a ten acre property, it's developed in a residential, and the residential has roads within it. Those are additional services the county has to pay for. Whereas if it comes within town, then the town picks that up, and the county gets the benefit of getting the real estate without the service cost to it. I sort of look at it opposite, what, why people come into the town. Which we have.
For services.
Yeah, is for our services.
Are those services enough that?
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we vote on it every year when, I think we, our employees are second to none. What we provide our citizens is second to none. And then it sort, it dumbfounds me to go to the county once you're in, because then you get to a more of a, if there's a rezoning, you have to go to a board that could at any year be political fodder to either the right or the left in where you fall, so.
But.
We're going off in a different direction.
I don't think you answered my question. Maybe I did not ask correctly. What will make you think that a county supervisor will not allow this to go into just the county and not just the?
I don't, I think they would allow it to come in. That's their job is.
That's what I'm saying. Why do you think that they will be against the town?
Right, but why would we allow them, property owners who want to come in, to come in? Why would you vote for that?
Because there is real estate money. I mean.
Well, it's sort of break even. I mean.
I don't know. I have my opinion. I think if I was in the county, I would be glad to give it back, you know?
It's still a county piece of property, sorry.
I think.
Sorry, it's still a county piece of property. They benefit by not providing services. But if somebody wants to go to the county, then by all rights, if they meet our criteria, if, on a board of supervisor, why wouldn't you let it in?
But we saw, we saw an email today from Randy talking about how many things that, that even Walnut Creek got, you know, like they got police, fire department, you know? We are sending our services there.
I would say the fire department in our e.
In our emergency.
In our emergency, but there is a joint agreement with all these first responders that Aliston could respond to one of our fires. The, you don't want to say, hey, in Walnut Creek, only the sheriff can go out there. It's not fair to those citizens who are in danger or need help. It's, there's an agreement between all the first responders that will help each other out, so.
And the county contributes money to our fire and rescue department every year?
But not to our police, correct?
That's, well, I looked at the calls that they had, and there was a lockout call. I don't think the county does lockouts. There are a couple of things that, you know, if, if it's a, if, you know, first priority is keeping the citizen safe or the care of the citizen. Doesn't matter whether the county does it or whether we do it. But I did read that list today, and a far greater number of county deputies responded than did our police department over a five-year period. Well, there you go. All righty. So are we going to send it back to the management team?
I think Randy has not finished.
Actually, a few other criteria, and these are heavily dependent on staff input. Evaluate impacts on the following: emergency services, police, fire, and rescue. It would require administrative and emergency services staff recommendations. Utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater would require administrative, public works, and engineering staff recommendations. Traffic impact and street maintenance would require administrative, public works, and engineering staff recommendations. Solid waste and recycling would require administrative and public works staff recommendations. Recreational services and facilities would require administrative, aquatics, and parks and rec staff recommendations. And these recommendations could be as simple as just maybe a one or two-sentence statement of impact, although it could be something as involved as a study of utilities or, say, a traffic impact analysis. And it sort of does put the burden on staff to bring that to you. But honesty, I felt it needed to be this way just because each case is specific to the property.
When you say administrative, you do mean planning, right? Associated under that.
Yes, well, actually.
Or is that separate?
Potential tax laws would be administrative and finance staff recommendations. And consistency with comprehensive plan, urban development areas, and utility planning documents would be administrative staff, planning, public works, and engineering staff. Evaluate needs for the following: evaluate impact over all size of the town. That'd be administrative and engineering staff. And assess impact on the balance of zoning districts would be administrative and planning staff. Application, we're recommending a thousand dollar fee. That's basically to cover advertising and staff time. We would require a plat to be submitted by the applicant. The questions on the application include: why are they applying for a corporate boundary line adjustment? What are the development plans for the property if the adjustment is approved? Describe potential impacts that they anticipate to town services. And as with the review process, once the application's received, staff would review the application for completeness, schedule a public hearing with town council, and staff would provide analysis to council based on the information provided by the applicant and the criteria. And staff would then develop a draft ordinance. The town attorney and staff would create boundary line adjustment with the county staff and attorney. The draft ordinance, boundary adjustment agreement, the application, and staff analysis would be available to council prior to the public hearing. We'd hold the public hearing and then have council action. Staff community would keep the results with county staff, and planning commission would be involved in rezoning review for bringing property into town.
Okay.
Well, is it close again for this, for someone to apply?
Thousand dollars is recommendation.
Randy, since this is something that would be here for years, probably not touched for years, kind of like our billiards and alcohol ordinance. Would it, would it be good to put a thousand dollars on there, or?
Well, we could adjust the review fee at any time. That's, you know, subject to review. If we do think the costs are going up as far as advertising and staff time, we can increase it. We do review rezoning and conditional use permit fees, building fees, things like that over time.
So it's not, when you do these permits, it's not by the size of the lot and the property or the development? I thought it was by the size.
With, with rezonings and conditional use permits, we do have applications based on size, although, basically, we're thinking, there is some benefit to bringing property into town, and most of the cost would simply be the advertising cost. The joining property owners, I don't believe necessarily have to receive a letter in regards to a boundary adjustment. But they are required to receive letters for rezonings and conditional use permits.
And how much are we charging for CUPs and?
The minimum fees, the minimum fee's seven hundred and fifty. It does go based, it does go up based on area, though.
So ten acres, what would it cost?
Ten acres, I believe it's a thousand.
Okay. So we're sort of mimicking that with up to ten acres. But we charge a thousand dollars for one acre instead of just seven fifty, right?
Correct.
All right.
You're good with the initial. We're not going to pass anything tonight, but any tweaking, Tim?
No, I think Henry had one thing he wanted to add, just that the county has to be in agreement. We understand they have to be, but just put it in writing.
Yeah, why, why should we go through the whole process and then they turn it down? Right? Or they're fifty-fifty.
Is that something that they have to go to the county board or supervisors before anything?
It would be required they have to have approval from the county board of supervisors. They'd have to have a public hearing as well.
So what is the clause for the county to do, like you thought was to do your request today? When this was set out of property?
I don't think they have a fee for this.
Like we will continue to not have a fee for property coming in?
No, I think it would be a thousand dollars.
I think, I think so.
I think I, I would like to see the map of Christiansburg as far as how much land is available for this, because I think ten acres is a lot. I mean, ten acres you're talking about, which can be five hundred units.
You know, well, I just, I think that, I mean, it's, it's relevant. I mean, well, the, it is relevant, the number of acres that's available. However, in my twenty-two and a half years on council, I have never entertained where someone left town. Now, I've had a lot of people come in.
With one exception, the animal shelter.
The animal shelter, that's, that's animals. That ain't us. So I've never, we've never experienced it. So it's, it's new to, it's new to all of us, and I've probably sat here longer than anybody, even, I think even including the town, town manager. I'm not too, we're not too far apart in terms.
That's the only, like I say, decorporation that I think has ever occurred is the animal shelter property. And that was a piece of property that was kind of stranded on the other side of the bypass because when we, we did the bounder, I guess, annexation, we went to basically the far side of the VDOT right-of-way, and VDOT vacated a portion of the right-of-way and sold it to the county. So it was kind of a stranded parcel over there.
There was no way we were going to get anything developed on it, I don't think. Okay.
So I think y'all've done a great job considering where we were a month ago or whenever we started all this, so.
I think so. I think, all right.
Go ahead. Joanna, since you gave me a hypothetical, I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, you pointed me out specifically on this. If you were hypothetically a county supervisor, why would you take a piece of property from the town into the county?
To the town, to the county?
That's basically what you asked me.
It's already part of the county.
Right, but why, is that the reason why you would let it exit corporate limits of the town? So you would agree to let a town property go into the county?
I don't think for me. I think if it was coming to me or whatever, and I had to do a whole bunch of different stuff or whatever, but as far as right now, when you talk about land that is already there and there is the stuff provided, I don't think that there's too much cost overhead that I can see from my perspective.
Okay. So we're now, we're now hypothetically done with this?
We are hypothetically.
Are we going to hypothetically go on to staff reports?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. In regards to the application and the current request, would council want the application filled out? Or would you want to consider that application grandfathered under, I guess, prior policies?
I personally, I. Personally, I feel that it should be from this point forward. You know, this proposed three acres was, was three acres, right? Six acres, three, whatever.
Three point three.
Yeah, I mean, it was already in the works before this came up, so I don't, I don't know that it's, it's probably legal, but is it ethical to go back and say, oh no, we changed this effective today? You got to jump through the hoops. I don't think it's ethical for us to do that.
I think it should go on, just like everything else. If we put a rule today, it should go on, and whatever followed the rules, because the reality is, just because something is grandfathering in some cases, doesn't mean that it's not going to be, we're not going to start charging for those things. I mean, it's like he came over here today to request for this. I mean, there is an order in some place.
So we've had this on the table for four weeks at least.
But he hasn't had a public hearing, he hasn't done anything.
Doesn't have to have a public hearing, Ms. Hicks, what did we say?
They sent a letter, that was it.
It does not require to have a public hearing to go out of town, it does to come in.
He sent a letter, that was it to me, and then we had a discussion.
I think we have, we have two people weighing in, Randy's looking for, and Tanya, of course, is not here, he's, you're looking for direction on the majority of council.
Yes.
Alright, so if you want to
So what was your question again, Randy?
The request that's pending, should we follow the proposed processes, or, and require an application for that, or should we basically consider it without that? And/or use of any of these criteria?
Tim?
I think the, I think personally, because of the application created this whole, this whole process, or because of their request, not application, but because of their request, it caused this whole process, and we wanted to come up and be able to solidify. If the answer's yes or no, why? And so I personally think that they should submit the application process, just because we went through, not just because we went through all this work, but we created this to cover our rears on town council, to say we did the right thing.
Very good.
And so from that perspective, I think they should fill out the application, and, you know, we start like it is today.
Okay, Sam?
I agree with that.
Henry?
I agree with the application, I would waive the fee, though, since it's already been started.
Should I with you?
I'm not in objection to that.
Sam, you agree with that? Waive the fee?
Yes.
On this request?
Yes, on this one.
Okay.
Assume the fee. I think assume the fee would be.
Assume the cost.
I think since it's going to have a public hearing, there is going to be a cost to us involved with this, I think there should be at least a half of a charge, at least five hundred dollars.
So you want to?
Because it will include our advertisement and things like that. I don't think our board should be free.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
I personally think we don't, I don't, I think you don't penalize an applicant who pointed out our lack of policy for it, you know, so I tend to think you let this one go, and then you start fresh thereafter.
Okay, so I have three that are in favor of filling out the application and waiving the fee. Mrs. Hicks wants to charge half the fee, and Mr. Jenkins does thinks we should, we should just let this one go. So that is basically four and a half, three and a half to one and a half in one absence, so.
Is that a lack of policy if this, we haven't done this before, because, I mean, we just don't do this? I mean, we want as much land that we can to acquire as being part of the town, or that's my feeling. I want a lot of people to be a part of the town.
Okay. So, what I did
I think you have four that complete the application.
Complete the application.
You have one out of us who wants to
Wants to charge half the fee.
Charge half the fee.
And three that does not.
Right.
Three does not, so the three
But you have four that at least want, the majority says, at least get the application done.
That's right, and that's what we got.
Which is information, that's all it is.
Very good. Alrighty, staff reports. General Manager?
Just like to point out that we'll be going live with our new Tyler Munus software beginning of the fiscal year. That's been a lot of work for our finance department, Val and her staff, big changes for us, hopefully we'll be a little bit better off with the new software.
It's a learning process, isn't it?
It is.
And I'll just point out that our July fourth festivities will be ten to four downtown on Monday, and our fireworks will be at nine fifteen. We'll have viewing available at Uptown Christiansburg, Walmart, and the retail area.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Brown?
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Any other staff here to report?
I'll read it.
Okay, we're not ready, of course. Oh, council, yes, ma'am. Council reports. Mr. Shawalter?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Mrs. Hicks?
I would like to have maybe more information. I discussed a little bit with Marcy regarding SROs in the school system, and how I, it was, I guess I knew a little bit about information about SROs in the school systems from Christiansburg, but I thought my assumption over the years has been that we always got the money back reimbursed to us for our police officers to provide the security for our schools. And now, when I'm mentioning this SROs, I'm just talking about, I want to make sure that our kids obviously are protected, and I think it's important to have a police officer in every school, but the whole concern to me is that this is taxpayer's due, that we are paying for a police officer to be in the school system. That is, that's, I always felt like the reason why we pay the eighty-nine cents per hundred to the county is because we have schools, and they provide the schools. But they should provide the safety that goes along with the school. And I don't think, obviously, if something was going to happen, I'm sure, you know, I have, I'm confident, nobody's going to look at who pays for what, everybody's going to go over there in a matter of seconds, and I know our police officers will be there in every school, whatever happens, they are going to not look outside.
Joanna, I would suggest, since this isn't on the agenda, and this is a very large issue, you request this go on the agenda for the next meeting.
I would like to be on agenda for the next meeting, so my concern is
Okay.
We're dangerously going into a conversation that we didn't advertise to the public. That's my concern, and this is a real, this is a matter that concerns a lot of parents, so.
So Randy, if you put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
So.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
Nothing, very good. The mayor will take the work on this.
Another thing, we add another thing to the agenda for next time, tourism.
You don't think we need it?
Well, how about we just add it?
We just talked about tourism.
Let us know what you want to talk about.
Yeah, you give us the details of what
I want to make sure that we get what we're paying for, and I don't think that right now we're getting what we're paying for, and I think we can do a lot better with the money at the rec center, a different location right now.
Again, I do
On the agenda for next time.
Right, and we shouldn't be discussing it unless it's on the agenda.
I think he said that he wanted me to say what he was going to be about.
Right. Ending the tourism agreement.
Yeah.
Tourism agreement, alright. Randy, you got those listed?
Yes.
Okay. Any other business to come before council? Mr. Shawalter?
Okay, I make a motion, request for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A seven pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. And Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential litigation regarding construction of the Christiansburg Huckleberry Park.
That's in the form of a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
That is five oh, we will take about a three minute, four minute, seven minute, eight